Let's allegiance to the flag, United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Okay. Catherine, I'll call them rolling please.
Yes. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Arena?
Here.
Mr. Kashani?
Here.
Mr. Kosel?
Here.
Mr. Malta?
Here.
Mr. Mixel?
Here.
Mr. Jardina?
Here.
Mr. Artuso?
Here.
Mr. Sacrament?
Here.
Okay, with that we've got actually two tables left. Dave, you want to read the first one there?
Sure. 765 Ridge Road Vestibule.
766, I think it is.
Oh, sorry, 766. Ridge Road Vestibule, located 766 Ridge Road. Applicant Andy Kaptin?
Kaptin.
Kaptin is requesting preliminary final site plan approval for the construction of an eight by six point five front vestibule and handicap access ramp for an existing dentist office on a 0.25 acre parcel in a CO commercial outdoor storage district under Dakota Town Webster.
Okay, Andy.
Okay, so I'll just go over what we wanted to do.
Yeah, that's all.
So, we have a dentist office at 766 Ridge Road, and it's across from the town's landscape. So they currently have a stoop there that's about seven foot and comes out about four and a half foot, and it has a flat roof over the top of it that's not the best looking. So we would like to replace that with a six and a half by eight foot front foyer or vestibule. Purpose of this being they're having difficulty with handicap access into the waiting room. So this is going to facilitate handicap access. It'll have a concrete wheelchair ramp, which is basically very similar to the sidewalk that's there now, except it'll be elevated a little higher.
You're closing it in, same?
Yeah, we'll have two commercial doors on the front, two outswing thirty-six inch commercial doors, glass, and two on the other side, so it'll be an airlock for the waiting room.
You needed a variance for that, as far as setback variance, did you get that?
It was approved at the last meeting.
Yeah, you did get the variance. It's on the board, yep. Yeah, there was a mix-up in where the dimensions were taken from and so on, I believe, but they got it all resolved. All right, Andy was in a month and a half ago, I think, something like that.
I don't know the exact amount of time.
That doesn't matter, that's right, I know it was a while ago.
Yeah, this is a.
This has gone on and on, so. Anybody, any questions or issues, concerns, or? No, I think it's probably necessary for their business. It turned into more of a fiasco than what size of it even relates to, you know? Anybody, any concerns, issues? Again, it's a public hearing, so if there is anyone wishing to phone in on this issue, a neighbor, got the number, and that number is, what is that, it's eight seven two seven zero one one. Nothing? We can keep going with the secret anyways. Derek, you want to make a secret on that?
Yeah. Town Webster Planning Board considered request by applicant Andrew Kaptin to construct an eight by six point five foot front vestibule and handicap access ramp for an existing dentist office on a 0.25 acre parcel, have an SPL number 079.17-1-9, located at 766 Ridge Road. The planning board classifies the proposed action as a type two action under section 617.5C9 of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second. Okay, I have a motion, we have a second there.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Kosel?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Kashani?
Aye.
Okay, so you want to make a motion for preliminary approval? First thing.
Make a motion for preliminary approval for 766 Ridge Road Vestibule, subject to PRC comments.
Pretty simple, Dave, I'd suggest just as presented. Just make it as presented.
Yeah, we approve it as presented.
Because there's nothing really superhuman.
Nothing to talk about.
Tap in the front, no, exactly.
It's a motion.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Kosel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Kashani?
Aye.
You got to make a motion for.
Make a motion for final approval, subject to PRC comments, subject to preliminary approval conditions. Significant construction shall occur within one year, is deemed by the planning board to expire on eight seventeen, 2021. Conditions for preliminary final approval depicted on the cover page of the final design plans.
Eight seventeen, eight eighteen.
Eight eighteen.
Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Your second?
Second.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Kosel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Kashani?
Aye.
Good, I guess you're all set fairly.
Okay, thank you very much. Good luck. Okay, have a nice evening.
You too, you too.
All right.
Okay, Dave, you want to go with the other one?
Two one three eight Empire Boulevard Edition, located at two one three eight Empire Boulevard, applicant Rochester Birds Stores, requesting preliminary final site plan approval for construction of a two-story addition for storage associated with the exotic bird store on a 0.57 acre parcel in an MC medium intensity commercial district under Dakota Town Webster.
Yes, sir. Well, I don't know what to say, but we're trying to get permission to put up an addition of the building that we already have, as the business is expanding and we need more storage and working facilities.
Can you give your name for the record?
Yeah, I'm Major Salafia, I'm dead, I was dead.
Sounds like Salafia.
Yep, you put in the addition, okay, you've got the drawings, so you stepped at those, interesting, how you stepped at.
We stepped it to try to avoid the variance, so we can stay within the setback lines.
Yep, that's good. Now, I was there one day, and the highway department went over to the issue with the neighbor, gentleman next door, where the water drains.
The neighbor there has the lowest lot in the home in the subdivision over there right in front of us, so unfortunately some of the water runs into that, but I built in a machine over there the other day, a bot cat that cleared up an existing cupboard that over the course of time had been filled in with debris and stuff like that, the water flows like a river.
Yeah, apparently there's a, now I don't know whose pipe it is or what, but.
There should be an email that Josh directed today?
The pipe that goes through there?
Yeah.
We just got it now, but.
Yeah, it was apparently given an easement in 1963, so I've talked with my neighbor about it and.
Move closer to that mine there.
There you go.
I talked to the neighbor this afternoon, which is why he wrote the letter of support, explaining that Dad sent out a crew there with a bot cat to really clear it out and try and make the water drainage appropriate.
Okay, so along the lot line, along the property line, can it be burmed up a little bit there, just to try and keep it from?
To the end, I think he's thinking of doing that. He made the comment yesterday that he was thinking of putting a berm on his side, because he's going to be putting a new driveway in his portion of his land there.
The neighbor?
The neighbor wants to put a berm on, yeah.
So between the two of you, or how's it going?
Well, I haven't, I've got, we're pretty amicable, so if I need to do something to help him as we're working through this, but I was out there the day that it was a big rainstorm, and I have a video of it just running beautifully from life over to the end. So we're now successfully going from one drain to the next, so. I mean, we're going to watch it, because obviously we don't want any water standing out there anymore.
Well, that's, that's, see, that's what I'm looking at, I mean, having seen what you got, I understand what you got, the land is lower.
Right.
But if it can be buried, you can direct it back to the woods before the park.
Yeah, and we're going to do that. We dug it, we dug it with a machine deep enough that the water has no chance of going in this side anymore, it's going to stay where it is, and it's going to go down at the end of the cupboard.
All right, I guess that's the best thing to.
Yeah, and we offered to even do more, but he was a little bit resistant, and says, no, I think that's good enough.
Okay.
And we saw with the big rainstorm the other day, and it was working just like it's supposed to.
Yeah, okay. All right, you got your parking, got enough parking on the site? Actually, that's all hard surface there anyways now, right? I mean, you got some grass back there, but mostly.
Yeah, it's.
So you're not getting any more water because of the roof, it's hard.
Not at all. We're actually going to be able to direct the water from the roof with a gutter. Right now it's falling in the parking lot, and it goes wherever it wants to, but when we put the building, we're going to try to put the gutter to access at the end of it, and it's going to go towards the end of the lot.
Yeah. Yeah, and my point was, it's all hard surface, whether it's a roof or the bottom, the water's still going to go.
It is a.
You're not putting something hard where there's something soft, in other words.
Not at all, exactly.
All right, all right, anybody have concerns or questions, or?
No.
He's kind of a unique setup, the way he designed it, stepping it.
Yeah, we wanted to stay within the variance, so we didn't have to go that route.
Mm-hmm.
It worked inside for us, so we figured we'd go with it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
Just different, that's all.
When are you going to have?
What's that?
Are you going to have Mr. Marapies recheck?
Recheck?
The drainage?
Well, he did, he was there just the other day.
No, after they do whatever they're going to do.
Yeah, I think he's been there since we've done it. It's been corrective, I didn't have a video of him that time, see, uh.
We corrected him last week, that the town was there, I think at the very end of the week, where the work was already done, and the building was replaced.
Yeah.
Okay. This is dated August 6th, I would say have Mr. Malta send another email, in fact, he did that.
All right, we can, we give it to approval, then make, all right, put something in there.
There's got to be something in the record to say that it was corrected.
Make it so the highway department rechecking it, then, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, moving along, anybody, any issues or concerns, and again, this is a public hearing, so if there is anyone wishing to call, comment in regard to this project, again, it's eight seven two seven zero one one. We'll wait a couple minutes here. Now, what do you do, you ship birds all over, I understand, right?
We sell a lot locally, we, I'll go a little further. We actually sell birds primarily in Rochester, Syracuse, and Buffalo. We get visited from Ithaca all the time. It's a unique business, so because of what we have, there are people that come from all over the place. We actually have had people fly in from Texas, I've met people at airports several times now, and they've actually stayed in the hotels, and we even sold one bird to Taylor Lynn Hall, I don't know if anyone's familiar with her, but she's a journalist that is, we're kind of excited that she has one of our birds in Buffalo, down in New York City. So, it's unique, it's been a lot of it around the country, so people travel for us.
And you raise them also, or?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we, we raise them.
So you raise them too?
From about two to three weeks, we pull them, and we raise them and nurture them with our staff.
Hmm, that's interesting.
Yeah, it's a pretty cool project.
Yeah.
Neat.
Okay, well, no one is calling in, I guess there's no concerns there, so we can move forward. Derek, you okay with everything?
Yeah.
It's a pretty simple thing, it's an existing building, this would be an addition. Well, go ahead with the secret.
The building's less than 4,000 square feet, didn't require any variance, so it's straightforward from a standpoint. Town Webster Planning Board considered request by applicant Rochester Bird Store to construct a two-story addition for the stores associated with an exotic bird store on a 0.57 acre parcel, have an SPL number 093.08-1-8, located at two one three eight Empire Boulevard. The planning board classified as a proposed action as a type two action under section 617.5C9 of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Our second?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Kosel?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Kashani?
Aye.
Okay, we have to do a preliminary, someone wants to do a preliminary, and I'll just move with it then. I'll make a motion for a preliminary approval, and we'll make that subject to the, a couple PRC comments, one being just the, about the, regarding the drainage from the site with the highway department. Let's see, no balances were required, no lands being conveyed to the town, recent sitting, nothing there, all the improvements we, well, we'll put number eight in, all the improvements should be constructed according to the specifications of the Town of Webster. And any site work, meaning drainage and stuff in this case, is, there's number 10, would be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster, and comply with all requirements of state, county, and town agencies, addressing drainage, lighting, you're not putting any additional lighting on or anything, are you?
Probably going to put some in the back of the building, just to keep.
In the back?
Yeah, just to keep it up, you know.
Okay. Sinage, you're not looking for signage, you're all set with that?
No.
Buffalo, okay, roll, then, okay, just thirteen, address drainage we'll put. Let's see, the landscape, hardscape, nothing there, pool is subject to, okay, so I'll make a motion that we, with those comments, and the building design as, as presented, and make the approval subject to, what is the drawing for the numbers, anybody see the drawing number on, right there? Drawing as presented, we only had one drawing for them, so. Okay, that would be a motion for preliminary. Our second?
Okay, Mr. Kashani?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kosel?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Okay, you're all set with that. Final approval, make a motion for final, make that subject to, same, I don't think in this case there's parks and rec fees, make it subject to preliminary approval conditions, number three, subject to applicable governmental fees, subject to Department of Public Works approvals, and significant construction should commence within one year, that being August 18, 2021. And we don't need preliminary, nothing on there, nothing on that one, let's see. Josh, you didn't put a letter of credit for that, did you?
No.
No, okay. All right. All right, stormwater facilities are constructed, the applicant is working on that, and subject to resolution final, subject to resolution final approval minutes, and I guess that would be final approval. Second. Derek?
Dumb wife.
Mr. Mixel?
I'm wise.
Okay. All right. Mr. Kashani?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Kosel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Okay, we're all set, good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
You got to stop over there, somebody will see these birds. They will, thanks. Okay, well, I'll sit with that one.
Eight seventy Home Road sign, locate eight seventy Home Road, applicant Premier Signs is requesting sign approval to allow replacement of three building mounted signs and one panel sign on an existing monument associated with the rebranding of Reliant Federal Credit Union on a 1.85 acre parcel in an OP Office Park District under Dakota Town Webster.
Good, how are you?
How are you tonight? Good, if I hadn't get started, give us your name, and we'll get going.
Mark from Premier Signs, and I'm not sure which one we're doing right now, Calvert, I don't.
Well, first one you got is the.
Reliant?
Reliant, yeah.
So I'm here to go over the signs for Reliant, they recently changed the logo, and we're changing all the signs at all the locations to reflect it. Basically, they're pretty much putting what's there now, except for, it's a little bit less square footage, because that aisle that they used to have on the logo, used to take up quite a bit of room. So if you look at it now, you'll see it's, it is a lot less than what was there existing. And we're pretty much just replacing where the signs were with the new logos. Same way with the sign out by the road, we're just replacing the face in there with the new logo, and that will be opaque like it's supposed to be, background. And then the ATMs, pretty much the same, a little bit less square footage again, because we got rid of the aisle, so. It's pretty much the same all around, it's just a little bit less square footage and a little bit less signage.
Basically, just putting the new signs and new letters and stuff in the same area that the other sign.
We're taking the old ones down, putting the new ones up, yeah, in the same exact spots.
With all signs, basically the same thing, so there's no new signs going in, just a modification of the.
Right, just, well, they're new, but they're, you know.
No, no, I mean, there's no new structures.
No, no, everything is just replacing what's there now to.
On the, on the new signs?
Yes.
There's like a background, a gray background?
Yeah, it's just a paint on the wall.
Okay, so they're actually going to paint the back facade, then?
They're painting some of them, I'm not sure, I think that just showed up kind of dark on the printer, I don't really think there's anything there. I know that some locations were, were taking down the old letters, or patching and painting the wall where the old ones were, get rid of the holes and everything. But I think for the most part, they're keeping the colors the same, they're just touching everything up and cleaning up to make it look nice for the new signs.
And they're not changing any lighting, or?
No.
Okay. Didn't snow last week, did it?
Last week?
Yeah.
No, these were from when I was originally doing the survey.
Thought I missed some time somewhere.
Yes, yes. The ones that are there now are, but they're backlit, they're not facelit, they're the same as what's up there now.
On the monument sign, North Pond Village, you have three or four businesses that are there, are they all at the same address, eight seventy?
The only address I have is eight seventy, I know that, but.
What was your question, Mark, I didn't hear?
Question was the monument sign, I was wondering, the Reliant, you've got Holiday Inn Express and the Kinder Care, are they all located at eight seventy Home Road? You don't mean when it comes to numbers on signs?
Yeah.
This makes it easier for somebody trying to find it.
Yeah, no question. Yeah, and that's a good point, is maybe, I don't know what the other ones are, if they're the same address, but maybe if, if you could put eight seventy on that sign, on the mindamunk sign somewheres?
I'd have to get a hold of the landlord, because I know Reliant doesn't own that, I think.
No, no, your sign is okay, if you just put it on, on your area?
Yeah.
Just, just put it on your sign.
Oh, put it on.
Yeah, just put eight seventy on it.
Sure.
This makes it easier for people to find it.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Good point.
Holiday Inn Express is eight sixty.
What's that?
Holiday Inn Express?
Yes.
Is eight sixty.
Okay, so they are different numbers, so that's eight seventy, yeah, okay. All right, that's it, anybody have any questions or anything? No? Well, get to the secret.
Town Webster Planning Board considered request by applicants, Premier Signs to replace three building mounted signs and one panel mounted sign on an existing monument, on an existing monument for Reliant Federal Credit Union, located at eight seventy Home Road. On a 1.85 acre parcel having SPL number 079.08-1-7.2. The planning board classified as a proposed action as a type two action under section 617.5C2 of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second? Who's second?
Mr. Malta, Mr. Arena?
Okay.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Kosel?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Kashani?
Aye. Somebody want to make a motion for a second?
Make a motion to approve the sign at eight seventy Home Road for, for Reliant Credit Union, as applied, as applied for with drawing number nine oh four five, date of two fourteen twenty.
Second?
We need to put in there that the applicant will clean up the, when the old signs taken down?
Yes.
Or they're going to have numbers on the sign?
And there'll be a number on the sign.
Eight seventy.
The monument sign.
Okay, have a motion.
I don't know who's second.
Mark?
Mark.
Mark, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Kosel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Kashani?
Aye. Okay, next one.
Don't go nowhere. Seven seventy Basket Road sign located, seven seventy Basket Road, applicant Premier Signs Systems, requesting sign approval to allow forty-four square foot monument sign associated with Calvary Chapel on a nine point eleven acre parcel in a IN industrial district under Dakota Town Webster.
Okay, okay. They are looking to replace the sign that's been there for a while years, and, and break it up and make it look nice. And what they want to do is, they want to take the whole brick base, and they want to, they're having a company come in and cover the bottom base with like a wood.
That's a wood? No, that's a company.
Oh.
It's cement, probably.
Okay. For the base, and then we would come in and set the sign on top of it. The sign is all opaque, background, and the only thing that would be lighting is the Calvary Chapel, Webster, and then the wheat symbol.
And this one also, I think it'd be a good idea, maybe you put, just put the address seven seventy.
Yes.
We're hoping to put the address on the, the actual wood looking base.
Yeah, that's fine, just so it's, so when somebody drives by, they see the sign, that's all, they see the address.
Can you have it on the building? The address?
Well, your building is backways, isn't it?
Well, it used to be, the numbers were on the building.
I think it's better, in my opinion, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know what the board's feeling is. I, I'm driving down the road. If I see the number on the street, I'm not having to be turning, looking at the building to see. I think that's...
The most ideal place for it, but I guess that...
I agree with you.
Yeah.
My concern with the number, uh, on the bottom would be that shrubs would grow up and mask that number.
Um, or heavy snow in the winter time.
Yeah.
I really don't want the shrubs to mask the log. Because it'd mean the sign with the, the wood over the bottom would make the sign better.
Right.
Show the base. The intention is to have, uh, shrubs covering all that.
So you're gonna keep them cut down low?
Yeah, we want it with the, with the, uh, at that part of the block, you know? So we don't want to cover up the whole nation's shrubs.
Mm-hmm. So then we just put, you wanna put the letters at, and the numbers on the lower part, then?
Yeah, at the top of the lower part.
Okay. I guess it's...
So the number's gonna be the same size as the current monument sign?
Um, uh, they would probably...
I'm sure they'd be at least, uh...
Probably right around the size of that link, the first link there, that's up at the top. There's four slats there to fit up in that space up there, I think, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, but it'd be awful small, don't you think?
Well, could she, could they make a, uh, a plaque by signing that building with over?
I just wanna make it easier for people that are looking for your, for the chapel, to, to find it. And, uh, as you know, or may not know, sometimes, uh, it, it's tough, you know? Cars today have GPS units and all that.
Yes.
But if you had it large enough on there and you're traveling down the road, at least you have a general idea of where it's located.
Yeah, but it's not size?
Well, I like the one size you have here. I mean, you can see that, but if you put it on just the first slab underneath the, uh, what's the, excuse me, the Calvary Chapel under Webster, and just use that one slab, that, that's awful, uh, it looks to me awful small and hard to view from the road. I mean, I don't know what anyone else on the board thinks, but that's just my opinion.
The slat, the slats look like they're probably about a half inch, I'm sorry, half, uh, half a foot, not much.
Not so much, I mean, you know, you get those, you can put them on your mailbox.
Well, they're six inches, because the base is two feet, so they're six, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four.
Yes.
I'd prefer to have the numbers on the top, in my opinion. On the sign? Yes. I know it would, you know, I, I like how the sign looks, but I'd love to have the numbers on there. Yeah. Yeah, I would agree. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think you wanna put it on the lower part. You got a nice-looking base on it. If it's on the sign, similar to the other one. Actually, you could put it on top of the sign, like you do have the other one, if you wanted to do that. You're only, you're only four, you're only five feet high. You got room to play with there, you could put...
Just kinda opens up the look of the sign.
I'm second.
It kinda messes up the design of the, with the little thing.
Where do you want?
It kinda matches the, uh, the whole, um, website, everything else, the font and the, with the, uh, icon there.
What if you had it the same color as the background for the sign, uh, at the top of it? And then the numbers in white?
We could always put it on the side, too. A lot of the towns have us put it on the side of the monument signs, so they can see it from the street. That's an idea, too.
Facing the street, you mean?
Well, so it would be like on the side of the, of the can itself, so that it's facing the street.
Yeah, facing the street.
You'll have numbers on both sides.
Well, you don't need that.
Well, you have, you see it from the roof.
If you put it like this, if this is the sign right here, and you're coming down the road, the, the box is pretty, pretty deep, so you could put a good-sized letter right on the side of that box. Would be facing the road, so everyone would see it.
Okay, so what's the thickness of that? You got a sign on both sides of that?
You're probably at least twelve inches deep.
Okay, all right, yeah, that would work, I think.
Wouldn't it?
Yep. What do you guys think?
It would work.
Putting it on the face of it?
Yep.
Yep.
It's all right, isn't it?
I don't know, it's a little...
Yeah.
No, we've done that. That's, that's a good idea.
On the side?
Just put it on the face of it, then. Actually, if there's seven, seven, zero, you know, whatever.
Yeah. I agree.
Just so, just so it's there, you got it, that's good, okay. I won't make an issue of that. Um, all right, the sign, the colors, the lighting, lighting, you have lighting going up on it, or inside?
No, it's inside, and the back is all opaque. And the back is aluminum.
Just the way you got it, just the letters.
You know, we have to keep the back opaque for Webster.
Yep, yep.
So the letters are the only thing that's lit, the background is not lit.
Good, getting it. Nice job.
I know.
All right. You have to do a secret, yeah, we have to do a secret, understand?
We're all set.
Yeah, sure, I think so. Everybody, you're all, can you hear?
Towne Wester Plan Board considered request by applicant Premier Signs Systems for forty-four square foot monument sign for Calvary Chapel located at seven seven zero Basket Road on a nine point one one acre parcel having SBL number zero six six point zero three dash one dash two six point one. The planning board classified the proposed action as a type-two action under section 617.5(c)(2) of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second? Okay.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr.?
No, Mr....
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Krishani?
Aye.
Okay, motion for the sign, seven seventy Basket Road.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, forty-four square foot monument sign at, uh, the Calvary Chapel there at seven seventy, seven seven zero Basket Road. And the sign will also have the street address on the front of it. And the drawing number is, uh, eight five four three dated one twenty-two nineteen.
Okay. Second?
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Krishani?
Aye.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody, stay, stay.
Have a good night, though.
Thank you.
Okay, ready? Sure. Okay.
Four two six Ridge Road Beer Garden located four two six Ridge Road, applicant Len Duma?
No, I get it right now. Doomer.
Doomer.
Screw it up. Doomer, because, serious.
Doomer.
Is requesting preliminary fire site plan to allow the construction of an outdoor patio, beer garden, and parking lot extension associated with Knuckleheads Craft Brewery on a point eight seven acre parcel in a R3 single-family residential zoning district under the quarter town of Webster.
Go ahead. Good evening, planning board. My name is Len Doomer, owner of Knuckleheads Craft Brewing, four twenty-six Ridge Road. I'm also proud to tell you, my wife and I now own the building, four twenty-six Ridge Road, so therefore we're going forward with a bunch of work. What I'm therefore is to ask for reapproval from the board from an agreement that was made on September fifth, two thousand eighteen. The only difference that I'm asking for is I'm not asking for the extension on the front of the building. I'm not putting an addition on the building. Uh, those plans with my ex-business partner and I have been scrubbed.
Okay, everything is basically the same. You got the additional land now, so you increased your parking?
We do have the additional land. Took us a year and a half. Boylan Coe did a phenomenal job putting the pieces together, and I refused to close that building until we owned that piece and got adverse possession.
And I know that was a big holdup for you, trying to get that resolved.
It was, it was rather a challenge.
Yep. Yep, I know that was a big holdup for you, trying to get that resolved.
It was, it was rather a challenge.
Yep. I stopped a little earlier, say, oh, this morning, actually, I saw Jake...
I heard you did, I was at PT, I had shown you thirteen weeks ago.
Yeah, he's in the right place. He was saying you're talking a four-foot fence around the front. You actually have a permit for a six-foot fence, when I look at the...
That is correct. And, and the reason I'm not interested in a six-foot. So if you are facing the building from the south, there will be a four-foot fence running along the front of the building for the beer garden. Then it will turn and it will head south out twenty feet, that will also be four foot. Then it will turn again and head west for thirty feet to the edge of the prop, my property. That will also be four foot. Then the property line that heads north forty feet will be six feet, and then coming back in the back will be six feet. So on the side of ExxonMobil, in the back, it'll be six feet. And the reason for the four-foot, the original concept was stones, stone columns, uh, wrought iron fencing, black wrought iron. But when Governor Colmore allowed us to open for outdoor seating, I should know the date off the top of my head. We opened June seventeenth, so it must have been the sixteenth that he gave us permission to do outdoor seating. We blocked off the area according to the state liquor authority and what they granted us. We didn't have to, uh, because, according to the state liquor authority and Governor Colmore, we could use space, but we blocked it off to give people condition to what the beer garden would be. Well, I found myself one day sitting out there talking to customers, and I realized I was sitting in a parking lot. Uh, me personally, I didn't like the feeling. So I changed my concept to be a board-on-board fence. So the fence I'm gonna use, I bought rough-sawn maple. Uh, the board-on-board fence will be four foot high across that area. When it dries, 'cause it's rough-sawn, I'll install that to the beer garden. Oh, and by the way, Thomas Landscape, Rick Thomas is doing the beer garden. He got a bunch of quotes, but I decided on his company, local to Webster, uh, do a nice job. But it will spray the fence gray, because the front of the building's also gonna change in two weeks to charcoal gray. So we're gonna try to get the whole look the same, is what we're going after. But yes, to answer, sorry, Tony, long, long about answer, it will be four feet.
Yeah, that's fine. No, I was...
So people stand up, you'll see them, but when they're sitting down, you won't see people sitting in the beer garden.
Looking at the, looking at the resolution back then, you did have a six-foot permit.
Correct.
But that's fine, four is less, whatever. I don't think there's an issue with that. Um, the only concern we had was a, a letter we received from, uh, Mr. Carl Witt at four thirty-three Ridge Road.
Okay.
And he had a couple of concerns, and it's, uh, let me just highlight them here. Let's see, the first is the additional nuisance from noise of the beer garden. I would request that the following conditions be considered. The beer garden be limited to the west side of the existing building only, that's where it is. So we're good there. The beer garden not extend outward toward the street beyond the foreplay of the existing building. It's pretty hard to do that, and what you have has already been approved.
That is correct.
From the location, so that's already been approved. Uh, but it is, and so he says beer garden should be fenced, as not be visible from the front of the property. It is fenced. Lastly, no music, you don't have music there.
We do not have outdoor music.
So there's no music, so it's good with that. Street parking has been discouraged by all three town boards, zoning, planning, and town board, on multiple occasions. Let's see, since a parking referendum last fall has produced zero results, I would ask that the stipulation be added uh, to any approval, that the rear parking expansion be completely finished before any other expansion plans are initiated. There are no other expansion plans, uh, so the only expansion would be, I guess, the parking, correct?
That is correct.
So, okay, so we're good with that. Uh, thank you for your consideration. In all attempts to prevent negative impact to our residential neighborhood, sincerely, Carl Witt, four thirty-three Ridge Road. There is no addition going on, you're not even adding into the, what was the doggy care place?
Field stand plate. Um, I do have permission from the, it has no impact to the planning board, the zoning board, or the town. I do have permission from the state liquor authority. I am gonna carve out some of the square footage, and it's in the drawing for potential future equipment, two more fermenters and storage. Our storage is getting tight. Um, so we will use some of that space. I don't know what I would do with the balance. The total's about twenty-three hundred square feet over there. At this time, I'm not going to rent it. I'll relook at that in two thousand twenty-one and see if I'm going to rent it or not.
I guess my question then would be to you, Len, is you're not increasing the area for patrons to come in?
That is correct.
Am I right?
That is correct.
Okay, just went there for the record, you got it.
Uh, and our fire marshal, Andrew, did increase our occupancy of the building.
Based on what you have there now?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, um, those are the other concerns, pretty much everything is relatively the same as what the approval was. When was it? Oh.
September fifth, two thousand eighteen, is when you got to read permission. And we couldn't go forward, 'cause we didn't own the building. In the intro, my partner and I, my business partner and I split, and then we put the offer on the building in May of nineteen, but when I discovered there was, uh, lot line issues that had never been cleared, from Corrigan to Sykes, from Sykes to Pelencar, to Pelencar, to me. I refused to close the building until it was cleared. It was on the survey, but it wasn't on the abstract. I'm sure the board knows, if it's not on the abstract, you don't own it.
Excuse me, okay. All right, so basically, it's, it's just an update of, of, of an approval that was granted in eight, in two eighteen, twenty eighteen.
No, actually, it doesn't have, like you said, it doesn't have the addition on the front.
No, we're not, we were originally gonna put an addition on the front of the second plot.
What's in fact? And, uh...
I, I don't see the benefit of adding that square footage and adding that money. Um, my ex-business partner and I had plans to make it a lot bigger brewery. We don't, my family, we wanna keep it at its capacity we are, and continue the business that we have.
All right, um, yeah, I can, we can, we do a secret on it, based on what we've got.
The project really boils down to the parking area and the...
Yeah, which is increases really nothing.
And the piece of, the piece in the back, trees are coming down right now. And Jeff Denway's gonna be drawing the, uh, design of the retaining wall. I've already got five companies that'll be quoting me bids, once I get the design done and go for a permit with the town. But it's gotta be geo-gridded, and there's gotta be drainage, and...
Uh, again, this is a public hearing, so if there is anyone that's interested in this wishes to call, it's eight seven two seven zero one one. In regard to the, uh, Knuckleheads Brewery.
Is it appropriate if I call?
Meanwhile, we can just keep going.
You can call.
Can I call? You don't change much, do you? Why don't you go ahead, I can do a secret, we can keep going.
Good.
If somebody calls, we'll deal with it.
Like, again, since this is, really has boiled down to an expansion of the parking lot and putting the patio in the front, the fence around it, it's a, it's a type-two action. So, Towne Wester Planning Board considered request by Len Doomer for an outdoor patio slash beer garden and parking lot expansion associated with Knuckleheads Craft Brewing on a zero point eight seven acre parcel having SBL number zero seven eight point one eight dash two dash three. The planning board classified the proposed action as a type-two action under section 617.5(c)(2) of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Krishani?
Aye. Can I add one piece? I don't know if it matters to what I believe you called secret. The current acreage on the property right now is point nine seven one, and this is, uh, the new drawing according to, uh, O'Neil and Rodak, that was just done in August, as I closed the property, because we picked up that thirty-feet parcel in the back. Oh, I don't know if that matters at all, but the current acreage is point nine seven one, and I've got a drawing here if you need a copy.
Okay. We're just submitting a secret to read the...
Okay.
The zero point nine seven one.
Zero point nine seven one. All right, uh, let's see. No one's called in, so we can close the public hearing at this point, and, uh, bring it back up. Anybody wanna make a motion for the approval? Actually, the approval could be basically the minutes that were approved, and then just modify it to include the additional parking has been added to the property. So there's additional parking, um...
Wasn't that property already in the later approval?
Yeah, it was. Well, but, but, yeah, but it wasn't, see, you didn't have that property in the back there yet.
Yeah, but he had a drawing, didn't he?
He had a drawing, but he didn't have, you know, now he's got it.
Yeah.
So it's in addition to what was, that was, that was proposed, if this all went through, I guess.
At that date, we thought we owned it.
Yeah.
But because Sykes's family thought they owned it for fifty years, and, as did Pelencar, and he bought it in 'oh three. However, no one did. And when Boylan Coe, my attorney, discovered we didn't own it, and we talked through it, I refused to close the building until they took adverse possession of it.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at is the area is the same?
Correct.
That you presented when, when you came in? And, and, you know, that's, so it's not additional parking, it's...
What, what's that? Just make a motion, make it subject to what, what was originally approved, basically, that's it.
Yep. I'll make a motion for primary approval.
Can't hear you, you gotta talk it up.
Make a motion for primary approval, four twenty-six Ridge Road Beer Garden, applicant Len Doomer. Subject to PRC comments. All improvements should be constructed according to specification of the Town of Webster. So you work, uh, to be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster. Comply with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency.
Dave, you wanna just make it, your, your call, but you wanna just make it subject to what the previous.
Yeah, we can make it subject to the previous approval.
Yeah, in, in whatever.
The difference is the previous approval had an addition, and this does not have any addition. Other than that, it's the same. And, um. And it's a motion.
I'll second.
Hold on. I would ask then, if you're gonna do it that way, would that the minutes from the last approval be printed and be attached to the approval of these minutes?
Yeah.
So good.
2018. That, I mean, use, use the same ones.
Yeah, but just attach it so there's a record.
Yeah, good point.
Okay.
Good. Print those out, just print all of it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good catch. That's a great idea. All right, final, Dave, you wanna make a final subject to anything else?
I thought we just.
We did, we did. We'll call it.
I'm pushing it along here. Yeah, you got a motion, or you have a second?
Yeah.
So, there, a second, if you're here.
Mr. Mixel, you did, I'm handing it here, I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Kosel.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Kashani.
Aye.
Make a motion for final approval, subject to PRC comments, subject to applicable government fees. Significant construction shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board to expire on 8, 18, 2021. Subject to resolution of final approval, it's.
You know, Dave, what you might just want to put in there, just subject to all governmental approvals, that, that way there.
Yes, subject to all applicable government fees.
Yeah, if you put it there.
Applicable government approvals.
I'll second.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Kosel.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Kashani.
Aye.
What was that one?
Good. Good luck. Next step is phone call to Rob to see how fast I can get a permit.
Yeah, you'll stop.
Just kidding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You need a beer for our hard brewery.
We'll see you in a couple hours. Couple hours.
Interesting.
Ready?
Sure, go ahead.
1062 Glenyeth Drive Dock, Antoyes, located. 1062 Glenyeth Drive, yes, please. Josh Artuso is requesting preliminary final site plan approval for the installation of a three-foot wide by 60-foot long permanent floating dock in a boathoist, and it might be associated with a .21 acre parcel in a NHR medium-high residential district under the code, code of Town of Webster.
No.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Josh Artuso, 1062 Glenyeth Drive, and I come before you to ask permission to get approval for a three-foot wide, 60-foot long permanent dock would replace my 42-foot long seasonal dock. Also requiring the installation of a permanent boathoist that will be on the north side of the dock. It'll be probably pretty much in the existing location of the dock, the dock envelope. There shouldn't be any issues in terms of encroaching into the neighbors, because I do have about 82 feet of frontage. Um, and I'm just looking for a more permanent solution so I don't have to keep taking it in and out. And with the variable water levels, I'm gonna go with a floating dock. Less maintenance.
I don't know, we've been getting a lot of docks around this bay lately. I think we gotta slow down on that. Now, that's a small, you know, what's, you know, what's good is, I appreciate you coming in. We're getting docks around, if anybody's familiar with that bay. There's docks, when was the last time you ever remember someone coming in for a permit for a dock, which they're supposed to do? And they're going in like crazy around the bay, but nobody's coming in for permits for them. And it really does fry me. I mean, knowing what you have to go through to, with the DEC and everything else, and it isn't happening. Uh, this is, this is a metal, you're using a metal dock, right?
Yes, it's gonna be very similar to the ones that are at South Point Marina, in dimension and material. It'll require pile driving approximately eight to 10 poles in the water, and I have my permit application into the DEC for those approvals.
And you know what's been so long? I don't remember what the heck the requirements and what, what has to be done with the, uh, the dock permit, no.
Table.
Other. You're gonna be in trouble tomorrow. Um, Brad, could you just take a look in there? I know we, we have to approve it. We're on the course with the, or Josh, you know what the procedure is even? I don't even remember now.
In terms of what the.
Well, yeah, I mean, we just, you know, approve it, but is there anything that we have to, any recommendations to the DEC or anything? I don't know.
No, it's not really required. They, they have a process in and of, you know, amongst themselves with the Army Corps.
Yeah.
It's a joint permit application, so there'll be several agencies that are gonna review it. You may wanna determine if it's consistent with the LWRP.
Okay, there you go.
And it's just a single-family residential dock, so that, in my opinion, would be consistent with what the LWRP allows.
Does, uh.
Anything about the LWRP consistency determination?
Does a letter have to go to the, uh, DEC?
Not.
From the town.
No, no, we have to send.
Not from the DEC board.
Okay.
No, that's a separate permit. He'll get from the DEC.
Correct.
Josh, is that boathoist, something's gonna be permanent as well, or is that committed out?
The, the poles that will secure it will be permanently pile driven in. The, the hoist itself would be able to be removed. Um, I'd like to try and see if it could survive a winter.
Yeah, you will. That's the same, I, I've talked to Josh, but that's the same boathoist I have down the main.
Yeah.
Yeah, it floats, you put, you put bubblers, you know, with those water circulators, you know, and just to keep the water around the dock. And that, and that, that particular unit, um, they, when you get the advertisement out of the paperwork on it, that thing could even freeze. And when it freezes, because it's a, like, two big cylinders, they're about that big around, what it does, it freezes and it'll lift it, you know, and it doesn't crush it, you know, so it moves with the ice. Uh, but I never really trusted that, so I had the bubbler anyway, so it stayed with water. But yeah, you can leave them permanent.
You do the same thing on the dock. There's a bubbler on the dock to keep it from freezing?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, prevents it from heaving and.
Nice system.
Fall apart. Find anything, Raj?
Is this section in the bay in the environmental overlord?
The only thing.
It is, well, that's a good question. I don't believe it's in any of the environmental, the EPod districts. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Um, I do not believe that my particular parcel is within either the woodlot, steep slope, or the, do you recall what the third one is?
Yes.
I, I can't recall off the top of my head, but I do not believe that I fall within that.
Okay. I know there's maps out there, we've just never seen them, so.
Yeah, I'm trying to get my hands from, on the most updated ones from Monroe County, because I've also had trouble tracking them down in the office.
Okay. It's gonna come up as part of the DEC permit.
Sure.
Okay, again, this is a public hearing, so if there is anybody that wishes to comment on this, it's 872-07011. 872-7011.
I have a question. I don't know, since this goes out at 6:00, do they need any kind of warning, warning light? Do they need any kind of warning lights on those?
Because they go. So if it's, well, it used to be if it was over 100, it used to be it was over 100 feet, you had to have a light at the end of it. Um, but I think you went to the, um, Underquay Bay Coordinating Committee meeting, didn't you? What'd they do? Did they reduce in the size of the docks?
They're actually working on an update to the harbor management plan law to be able to allow docks to be longer.
To be longer?
That's currently, yes.
Okay.
So that's, and, and yes, once you reach a certain length, and I believe it's 100 feet.
That's what I thought.
You're required to light the end of it.
Yeah.
Um, I plan on doing that anyway with some stick-on LED lights.
Yeah. Josh, because the water's so low at shore edge, that's why you're bringing the dock out farther, right?
Yes, 'cause there's.
That's where it is over in that, in the bayward shell, wells out. Yeah, it's, it's, you, you probably got about six feet of water in there?
It depends on the time of the year.
Yeah, like, well, you've got five, six feet.
Right now, I'm having a hard time getting my boat off the water, because the water's so low.
Yeah.
But yeah, it fluctuates in the spring. It's not an issue this time of year, moving into the fall. It's gotta be further out there.
Makes it tough with those 50-footers.
Boats. Yeah. Okay, no one's calling. I guess there's no concerns.
Too much jaw.
I'm gonna go seeker on that.
Yep. We touched on a couple things. You know, it is in the local waterfront revitalization area.
Yeah.
And it doesn't seem like it's in the environmental overlay district. Um, and the process of getting a joint application for permit, and that's gonna be the longest process on the whole thing. Um, so motion for an unlisted action. The Town of Webster Planning Board consider request by applicant Josh Artuso to install three-foot wide by 60-foot long permanent floating dock and boathoist on Underquay Bay associated with a 0.21 acre parcel having SPL number 078.18-0-01-061 in a medium-high residential district. The planning board deter, excuse me, the planning board determined that the proposed action is an unlisted action under Part 617 of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations. The planning board determined that the action is subject to single agency review pursuant to Part 617.6B1 of SIKR, and that it is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance. The planning board therefore designates itself lead agency for the proposed action. The planning board has given consideration to the criteria for determining significance, as set forth in Section 617.7C1 of SIKR, and has, one, considered the information considered in the short environmental assessment form, Part 1, dated July 28, 2020; and, number two, considered the public comments directed to the planning board during the public hearing on August 18, 2020; and, number three, completed Part 2 of the environmental assessment form. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of nonsignificance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board is authorized to make all actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration and to discharge the Town of Webster Planning Board's responsibility as lead agency for the action. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the information analysis above, the reference supporting documentation, the discussion of the action by the Town of Webster Planning Board is documented by the minutes for this meeting, that the proposed action will not result in any significant environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board therefore makes a determination of nonsignificance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the above reasons, issues a negative declaration as evidence of its determination.
Second.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Kosel.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Kashani.
Aye.
Okay, so am I gonna make a motion for preliminary approval?
Make a motion for preliminary approval. For 1062 Glenyeth Drive Dock and Hoist, subject to PRC comments. Any improvements will be constructed according to specification of Town of Webster. All same work to be in compliance with the Town of Webster, comply with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency.
As presented, it's rather.
As presented, yep. It's motion.
Second.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Kosel.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kashani.
Aye.
Make a motion for final approval for 1062 Glenyeth Drive Dock and Hoist, subject to PRC comments, subject to preliminary approval conditions, subject to all applicable government fees, subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant constructions shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board to expire on 8, 18, to 2021. Conditions of preliminary final approval depicted on the cover page of the final design plans.
As presented.
And I think that, yeah, it's, it's as presented.
Second.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Kosel.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kashani.
Yeah, aye.
Maybe.
Thank you.
Good luck, and I know you've been working on this.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, I guess that's the last one we have. Uh, I guess we're all set for this evening. Thanks for coming in.